Can I get a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bench. Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Protem Balls.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have all members present.
Okay, good evening again. This is a public meeting and the audience is asked to remain quiet and refrain from talking, booing, and outbursts. Once again, I need everyone to silence their phones. Councilpeople, I hope that your phones remain on silent as well. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements?
Just one. The city's convenience station is open the second Saturday of the month from 8:00 a.m. until noon. City residents who wish to dispose of large bulky materials may utilize this service. Items that can be dropped off include recyclables, building materials, furniture, trash, et cetera. The station will be open Saturday, October 8th. And Mayor, we have a proclamation on the agenda this evening designating October 9th through the 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week.
We will have it read by Councilwoman Scherzer.
I thought the, heard the fire marshal, but we'll take the chief.
Yeah.
He was here.
Oh, okay.
He was here.
Well, on behalf of him and the department and the chief. City of Saginaw proclamation, whereas the city of Saginaw is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, members of the Saginaw Fire Department are dedicated to reducing the occurrences of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. According to the National Fire Protection Association, statistics show that four out of five fire deaths occur in the home. And whereas, three out of five home fire deaths resulted from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. Statistics show that working smoke alarms cut the risk of death in home fires by 50%. And whereas, the National Fire Protection Association has established Fire Prevention Week to create greater awareness and innovation in fire protection and prevention. As a result, countless lives have been saved each year. And whereas, the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape", effectively serves to remind us it is important to learn at least two ways out of a burning building. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim the week of October 9th through the 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week. Throughout the city of Saginaw, and I urge all residents of this city to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2022, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Saginaw Fire Department. A witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 26th day of September in the year of our Lord, 2022. Signed, our Mayor, Brenda F. Moore. City councilpersons, Michael Balls, our Mayor Protem, Annie Bench, George Copeland Jr., Michael Flores, Monique Lamar Sylvia, Bill Ostash, Autumn L. Scherzer, and Reggie Williams II. Also signed by our city manager, Timothy Morelos.
You know that our chief was here, our fire marshal was here, but we're, you know, we good with the chief.
He was. I just wanted to make an announcement that during that week on Tuesday, October 11th, at 10:00 a.m. at Station 1, which is 801 Federal Avenue, we have our annual awards ceremony that the public and council staff is invited to. I hope you get a chance to come out, we can show you the station, the equipment, and you get a chance to talk to the firefighters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk.
That takes us to public input.
Once again, we welcome those who have come to sign up to address council tonight. Please speak slowly and clearly so that we don't miss what you have to say. You will be called to the podium by the city clerk. Speakers are allowed three minutes, limit. The clerk will be timing. Be sure you cover your main points. Remember, we want to remain courteous and respectful for the members in the public who are watching on us, who are watching us on G, I'm sorry, SGTV, and in the council chambers so that we can give serious consideration to what you are speaking about. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Rhonda Nelson.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. Thank you. I am here today to bring awareness to our nonprofit title, "Rebuilding Our Village", short is "row". The name stemmed from "It Takes a Village to Raise a Child", but as we all know, the village that we used to have to raise a child is no longer there. Abandoned homes and vacant lots where our neighbors used to be. Our nonprofit was created to work with the youth to help them stay in school, gain employment skills, stay away from drugs, violence, and gangs. But the more I work with the youth, the more I notice that there's a need to work with the entire family. So we changed gears a bit and started to do community case management, assessing the family's needs, connect them to resources within the community, whether it's housing, educational needs, employment, or whatever the case may be. We have purchased homes within the community and rehabbed them, and we currently work with local organizations and shelters. We currently have two families placed in the homes and currently working on another home. We currently purchased, well, over the last four to five years, we purchased about 11 vacant lots to maintain them and prevent dumping and bring the beauty back to our community. We hope to build homes in the future for our families. I have the personal educational and employment experience to ensure the success of our nonprofit now and going forward in the future. Thank you.
Next speaker is DeShonda Winters.
Hello, my name is DeShonda Winters. I'm speaking on, it says I'm from the township, but I'm actually 20 years in the city, so I'm speaking on the city, on affordable housing. I did a presentation, that's what I am trying to get put out there, more of affordable housing, because you can't look at me and tell, but I am on a fixed income, and I wouldn't make it on my own with, I get disability, I can admit that, to 841. I wouldn't be able to afford rent with just my income. So I live in income-based housing, where it really helps me. It really makes a difference that I pay 30% heal. I pay 30, down, down, sorry, down. I pay 30% of my income, and actually, heat is included where that makes a big difference. And I'm really trying to get more of that included in the city from where I'm from. So I actually did a PowerPoint. I didn't know, I was informed today that you only get so much time, but I did a presentation on, it took me three years to build it. I built the apartment complex, townhouses, and single flats that I've been trying to get put over here for the past few years. I'm actually looking at a particular property that I'm told is owned by the Saginaw Housing Commission, and I actually called about all the schools I went to, because I'm a product from here. I went to Emerson, I went to Merly, I went to Heavenrich, I went to Houghton, I went to Longfella, I went to Saginaw High, I didn't go to Weber, Central. Fixed that, didn't go to Weber. But I called and was told, though, that none of those lots are available. I didn't understand that, because I, I might be honest, I don't know the difference between the Saginaw land bank with the Saginaw School Board. I just thought they all Saginaw, y'all all together. But I'm trying to get y'all to look at that more of, like, let's do something with those lots. Let's do affordable housing. It really will help with our people with being able to pay bills. And then the most important things with houses these days is the furniture, with the insulation. And I still see plastic on people's windows, I still see ovens heating people's houses. And some people actually think that is normal, where we need to, let's go and make a change. It ain't normal to heat your house with the oven. It ain't normal to have plastic using the blow dryer to put that stuff on the window. So we really need more housing. We have a lot of vacant lots, and as we spoke earlier, I was a property owner, so I know about that, where they didn't allow me to buy the lot next to the house, and all that. So I wanted y'all to, you know, think about more with that, but affordable housing is very needed. A lot of us, I would love to have a job working for my 401K and Social Security benefits, but I end up with brain cancer, so I didn't get to do that opportunity. But I would like more things open up for my people. And that's what I wanted to tell you. And I wanted your guys' email to send the PowerPoint. Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Julian Morris.
My name is Julian Morris. I'm the CEO and editor, oh, I'm Julian Morris. I'm the CEO and editor-in-chief of Swag Magazine. So Councilman Williams said he wanted to hear more from young people about how ARPA funds should be spent, so here I am, I guess. We want stuff to do. We want the after-school programming that is engaging and fun. We want the fully functional recreational centers that have the good basketball rims and the clean bathrooms, the places for gaming. Some of my peers, they game competitively. It's a career for some. Not only that, we want the programs like Saginaw STEM and See What Works every day so that not only do we play games, but we learn coding to design our own games. We want a dance studio, a music studio, full art center for dance, music, theater, drawing, and graphic design. Of course, we want to be fed, because, you know, the school food isn't always the best food. Instead of talking about all the bad things that these kids are doing when not in school, we should be able to have mentorship and a safe haven to go after school, so it'll keep us engaged and off the streets. You know, our education doesn't just happen in high school and in school, and we need a space for creativity outside of school. You know, I submitted my own proposal for such a program that will train the next generation of journalists. I need my peers engaged with me so more of our voices can be heard. You know, I say I'm the voice of the future, but in reality, I'm the voice of right now. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
No, I didn't hear everything. I'm John Ray's old friend. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chico Ramos.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, and rest city residents. My name is Chico Ramos. I'm here on behalf of friends of Hoy Park as a community partner in different capacities. The first capacity is I work for the Saginaw Intermediate School District School to Work Program. And in this position, my job is to recruit and assist at-risk high school youth, providing them with the means of earning a diploma and opportunity for career vocational assessment. Strong economies upon youth have the skills they need to secure meaningful, well-paid experiences in the community. Community collaborations with Hoy Park help young people succeed in jobs and ongoing career learning. Larry Breathour and Hoy Park have been a vital community partner with the School to Work Program for over 18 years. Hoy Park has fostered the training of over 100 students in more than 14, or 12 different school districts in Saginaw, especially the city of Saginaw. The training of youth workers is critical for Saginaw because it develops the skills necessary for successful transition to adulthood. My second capacity is I'm the president also of the nonprofit Softball Jets Organization. Recently collaborated with Hoy Park and the Saginaw YMCA to hold a free softball clinic for children under 12. We had over 70 students attend the free softball clinic at Hoy. We also had a partnership with Mission Nutrition Program to provide meals for all the kids. Also, the summer programs provide free lunches through Mission Nutrition Program through the YMCA, but it's part of that greater collaboration. Yesterday at Hoy Park, the Jets Organization and Hoy Park put together a softball tournament which had over 600 people come to downtown Saginaw. A lot of people came from as far as Sheboygan to the greater Detroit area to come to our downtown Saginaw area. I grew up playing at Hoy Park, and as a volunteer, I see endless opportunity for youth at Hoy Park, and this is why I'm here today. The American Rescue Plans Fund will not only sustain the park's future, but will also continue to give children memories and the training opportunity that was given so many years ago. In this mission experience, we come to a single day when we look back at accomplishments and look forward to a better future in Saginaw. Thank you, city council members.
Our next speaker is Anastasio Ramos.
It was a mix-up, I think.
Okay.
City council members, you are where you sit, I'm sorry, my name is Danita Dorsey, city of Saginaw resident, Cathedral District. City council members, you are where you sit because we, the people, put you in that position. Your job is to represent us, and we are watching you. While it is your job to represent us and our communities, it is our job to remind you of promises made to us and to hold you accountable. For far too long, decision-making for the people has gone unchecked by the people. But not anymore. We are watching you. We are watching how you vote on issues. We are watching how last-minute agenda changes are made right before city council meetings. We are watching how these ARPA funds will be spent. We are watching your resolutions and your notices for public hearings and special meetings. We are watching your lack of engagement with the community and the people who voted for you. We are watching how you introduce motions during special meetings that the public has not reviewed and has had no chance to consider or discuss. We are watching how you are ignoring the interests of the people, like you did tonight on the single-subject special meeting, and furthering your own interests. Do you want to engage with us, or do you want us to just sit quietly while you do your own thing? Too often, government entities hide information from citizens seeking answers. We want transparency from our elected officials. You won our vote in November, right? Well, we want you to start really representing us, our interests, and our communities. We are not a mayor-led city. We are a city council-run city. We, the people, run you. You run the city manager. That's how this is supposed to go. The city manager is responsible to city council, not the other way around. We will not be left out of these decisions regarding ARPA. We will be included in how you spend our money in our city due to qualified census tracts. Again, we are watching you.
Our next speaker is Roy Lamas.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Roy Lamas. I'm a resident of Allen Park, Michigan. I'm the founder and CEO of Royal Energy, which is a local solar installation company. Although I live in the metro Detroit area, I am from Saginaw, as well as my entire family. My mother, my aunts, my uncles, they all graduated from Arthur Hill and still currently reside here. That being said, I've always wanted to do something to benefit this community. I know that partnering with Eric and Youth Development Corporation were able to do just that. We believe with correct funding, we'd be able to bring newly-built housing that is affordable to the community, but will also be affordable to live in. It is 2022. We cannot continue to build homes like we did in 1952. Likewise, we cannot continue to rely on the energy grid like we did in 1952. Energy costs are at an all-time high, and homeowners are having to deal with the rising costs from the utility companies. With YDC providing the new builds, Royal Energy would be able to provide solar for these new builds. This will allow homeowners to reduce their utility costs by up to 80%, which will save them thousands of dollars over the years. Solar, being one of the fastest-growing industries in the world, I'm actively looking to bring my offices to the city of Saginaw, to employ members of this community for a call center, as well as hiring the youth that comes through Eric's Youth Development Program for solar installation, which is a high-demand trade that YDC offers classes for at this time. YDC offers trades for youth ages 16 to 24. I'm 25 years old. I'm a product of this program. In conclusion, with the correct funding, Youth Development Program and Royal Energy would be able to provide affordable housing with affordable living costs, all while employing members of this community and educating and empowering the youth to get into trades that are in high demand. The youth doesn't have next, we have right now. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mildred Dorsey Bell.
To Mayor and all the council members here, I am Mildred Dorsey Bell, and I'm here to speak about the blight and garbage that is constantly dumped on Ray Street between Weber and Hess. As a homeowner who has built a home behind the fairgrounds, I'm constantly walking between Weber and Hess on Ray Street, picking up trash. Some trash is just a little bit too much for me to pick up because it consists of property that belongs to cars, car dumping parts, seats out of cars. We've had bed mattresses and other materials that have been dumped on Ray Street or somewhere close to Hess Street or somewhere close to Weber Street. And I'm also here to speak about the animals that are constantly in our yards because of the condition of the fairgrounds. I did hear that there was some funding that was going to be going toward the fairgrounds, but I also heard conflicting information that there's a buyer out there through the Saginaw Housing Commission that have made an offer. So I'm here to, just to understand what's happening with the property of the fairgrounds that has been vacant for over 20 years. So we have a number of animals that are constantly roaming the neighborhood, and I hear that there are coyotes out there. I'm hoping I don't see any soon, but I'm hoping that something is done in the very near future to help clean up the neighborhood that we so have invested so much of our private money into. I'm also here to speak about the Wilburine Convention Center where we submitted an application for ARPA money to be used as a community center. We're right in the center of where St. Mary's Hospital is, where Saginaw Public School District is, where the banks are, where there are other schools, where there could be useful activities for our children. As I heard the young man speak about, you know, we need to have certain things for them to do, and we have the building and the facility to supply the need for a community center. So I'm looking for two things, for help with the blight that's constantly, for the last 15-plus years, being dumped between Weber and Hess on Ray Street, and the cleanup behind the property where we own several lots behind my house, there's a lot of dumping. So thank you.
All right, we had John Stumpel on the list, but he canceled prior to the meeting, so we are now at remarks of council.
And we will start the second round with Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, thank you to everyone for joining us for a city council meeting tonight, and all of our public speakers. Again, we will always appreciate your words and know that we are listening to make the best decisions possible. I think a lot of the comments, what we did in the special subject meeting, I was going to address your comments on blight and home rehab. And I take it to my heart, because I understand when we drive around the city and we go to places, I'm very active in this community, and when you see Ray Street or the woods or, I was driving down right by Grasshirt, Brockway area, and you see it everywhere. So it takes us not just to make the decisions here because we got some money, but it takes all of us to, when you see something, call CarWatt. Call one of us. How about you stop and pick it up? Because I stop and pick up stuff. I stop, I go, we can, the mayor can hold pickups, cleanups, other community organizations can have cleanups, but it really takes us to step up. It doesn't have to be just then or the one-offs here and there. We all can do our part. The home rehab program that we passed tonight with, for $3.8 million, I know we're going to maximize those dollars, working with city staff, and I cannot wait to start seeing contractors and homes being remodeled, and people having furnaces and not having to use ovens, insulating, whatever it is. So I'm truly excited and thankful to the rest of council for voting that tonight, and I look forward to seeing our communities where we live, because we are all in different parts of the city, looking just a little bit better with some investment into our homes. And of course, I'll end to our fire department and with Fire Prevention Week. It was an honor to me, the proclamation. We appreciate, with the tax caps, it has eliminated a very robust fire department down to what we have. So what you guys do in the community, and ladies, excuse me, we appreciate it, and it's always good to know that bringing fire education is an important thing that you haven't got rid of. So thank you very much. And Madam Mayor, that is all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Ostash.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everybody, again, who stayed in the chamber and those who came in afterwards and are joining us tonight and watching from home everything that Councilwoman Scherzer just said, so I don't have to reiterate a lot of that. But also with the trash, it is a real big problem in the city. We did cleanups this year, and like I said in the last meeting, now there's even more trash in some of these areas. My neighborhood over on Atwood area where I live as well, so I'm hoping that some of the things that we passed, well, not hoping, but they will help to try to find out who's doing it, clean it up, and take over from there. And so with that, I also want to say it's getting involved with some of the cleanups also helps, too. It gives you kind of a sense of pride, a sense of ownership. I want to thank the Southeast Saginaw Neighborhood Association, which is the Wicks Park Association. I joined them over the weekend. We got about 10 square blocks cleaned up, thanks to the city staff and stuff, who provided some materials for that neighborhood to do that cleanup, and also going back to help pick some of it up. I had the, there's a couple things on here I want to hit. DeShonda, thanks for that wonderful story, so I look forward to seeing your PowerPoint presentation. You will get our email addresses from our staff. They're also available on the city website, but we can get them for you. Ray with Solar Energy, thanks for that. Exciting stuff. Young entrepreneur, working with a great organization. I know Eric and I have talked about that when I toured his facility, on his vision for homes, building that new home that's going to have that opportunity, or even like small solar farms in the areas that he's going to do his build. So excited that you're working with him on that project. Couple other announcements, Zoo Boo is back at the zoo, so that's coming up for Halloween, October 8th, 9th, 15th, 16th, 22nd, and 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00. So that's always a fun event for the kids and the families. I have seen something coming up on social media, so Heaven Lay is a company that's out there, certified nursing assistant programs, and there's a phone number, 989-577-5585. This information is also on my Facebook page, if you have access to the web. There's also another thing coming up, it's called Road to Restoration. This is driver's license clinics. This is, will provide residents with information to get your driver's license restored. This is going to be at the SBRC Marketplace, September 28th. The clinic's from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00, but walk-ins are from noon to 6:00. I'm done. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Yep, I'm all set.
Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month, everybody. Starts on the 15th, ends on the 15th. It's the only time we get two months, right? So I just want to be real quick, just have a quote that I love to read and love to live by, but it's by Mr. Chavez, and it says, "We cannot seek achievement for ourselves and forget about progress and prosperity for our community. Our ambitions must be broad enough to include the aspirations and needs for others, for their sake and for the sake of our own." And so that's something that guides me, and I hope it continues to guide me as we talk about ARPA. about ARPA and talk about the rest of the city. But that's all I have. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilman Cope.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here with us this evening, and thank you for our public speakers who have shared. Thank you for spending that time here with us this evening. That's all I have.
Twice in a row.
Councilwoman Sill. I'd just like to, again, thank everyone for coming. I won't prolong the time. We've kind of gone over, I'd just like to thank you all for coming and being part of the city meeting today. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Williams.
Good evening, everyone. This is the fastest speaking by council that we've had, so I guess I'll keep that going. But I do want to say thank you for everyone that came out to speak tonight, especially Mr. Morris. Thank you. I made that plea four weeks ago to hear from our youth. You are the only, the only youth that has come forward, but I appreciate that, and I appreciate the ideas that you threw out, definitely. On top of that, the Mexican-American Council, we've set something up, so this Sunday I will actually have a sit-down with several youth to hear their ideas. They're the only organization that has reached out to my, for my plea, so I am grateful for that. And Ms. Dorsey, thank you for your words. Sometimes it's hard for us to hear, you know, about ourselves, but for me, that's the best way to grow, especially when it's done constructively. So thank you for that. And Mayor, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. We have Councilwoman Rint.
Thank you. I, too, just want to add that some of the things we heard here tonight at Public Comment are things that I hope going forward will be remedied by some of the things that we passed tonight. And I definitely want to thank everyone who stuck around and thank our public speakers, but I would be, you know, regretted if I didn't say to Mr. Darren Jerome, especially since Mr. Stumpel was not being able to be here tonight. I just want to thank you for everything that you've done for the city, and thank you for your years of service. And personally, for me, you have been just a godsend to work with, and I'm very sad to see you go, but I'm very happy for you. And I just want to thank you and make sure that everybody knows that Darren really was a wonderful public servant for so many years and that he deserves our thanks. So, thank you. That's all.
Next, we have, oh, we have Mayor Protemo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank the citizens for coming out this evening and express your concerns, you know, which is the same as our concerns, too. We want to see the city move forward, and sometimes we need to get in the trenches and argue a little bit to get that done, and I'm always happy for that to happen. So let's just keep doing what we're doing and keep moving forward. Thank you.
It's always, it's always good to see the people in the audience. I need y'all to come more. Don't just wait till we get some money. Come and tell us what you want. We're not mind readers. No, we cannot change the world overnight, and I need to keep reiterating that. Every program out of that 200, 403, 409, Monique, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Sill, listen, I'm literally going through this book, and I'm seeing what we say we want. Something is good, something's got questions, but my desire is to bring everybody to the table, win, lose, or draw, and let you know an alternative. If you didn't make this cut, we gonna get you to another cut. So at the end of the day, I'm okay with report card grading. I've been hearing that for the past three weeks from a lot of citizens. I'm okay with getting my report card graded. I'm okay with it, because at the end of the day, nothing beats the failure but to try. And at this point in the juncture, I believe all of us up here are trying to do the best we can. And if you've got ideas, don't talk behind our back. Tell us. Tell us. If you bad enough to talk in the streets, you should be bad enough to step up. So, you know, not to put down to none of the community leaders or the community people. I love you. I love you, good, bad, or indifferent. If you don't love me, I do love you. And at the end of the day, it's a new season, it's a new day. Fresh anointing is coming our way. We getting ready to move forward. So we getting ready to pull the train out to Depot. All they want to go, get on board, because we getting ready to go to a brighter Saginaw. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We are now at reports from the manager.
Don't look at me that way.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I do want to just have a few things for council here, and I think one of the important things with the housing that was talked about tonight is we do have the opportunity to engage some of our larger employers and all of our, I can name three of them now that I can think of that have had housing programs in the past. Covenant has had a locked-work program. Years ago, St. Mary's had a program in the Cathedral District. I think they're interested in bringing that back. And also, House Pickle helped their employees get housing around their plan at one time. So I think we can leverage some of that money to engage those businesses again to help out with maybe potentially helping with payments or some other funding as well. And I will, and I know Councilman Ostash will remember, maybe some of the other council members, but we had a very active group in the city, Neighborhood Renewal Services, I think from the late '80s all the way up until about 2009 or '10, that their whole purpose was to rehab housing, and primarily it was in the Cathedral District around St. Mary's. And you can do a lot with a few people. That office, I think, had three people for several years, and was able to rehab a lot of housing in the Cathedral District and turn it into, I think a lot of it was, it might have been rental housing, but that's some of the housing that we are missing is the, missing middle housing, especially for people who do work in the city. So hopefully, we can engage groups like that or have new groups, or maybe some other ones can step up to fill that kind of role again here in the city. The other thing I did want to highlight is a couple of educational opportunities, because we do talk about opportunities for jobs and youth quite a bit, and I was talking to our fire chief last week, and you all will remember that the Saginaw Fire Department worked with the Saginaw Career Complex to create firefighter training program, and that's a real testament. It was, they took the initiative themselves and chief and also other command staff and training officer Brandon Housebeck really took the lead on that. And I did look up the, in the Saginaw Career Complex, it states, "Interested juniors who successfully complete the first year of the Law, Public, Safety, and Security Program have the opportunity to apply for the Fire Academy, which offers a trifecta of hands-on training and professional instruction at Delta College, the City of Saginaw Fire Department, and the Saginaw Career Complex during their senior year. Students will be dual-enrolled in the Firefighter 1 and Firefighter 2 at Delta College with the opportunity to earn 12 free college credits. Students will learn and train off-site four days a week, returning to SCC one day per week, and at the end of their senior year, successful completers will be eligible to be employed as a professional firefighter." So if you have a Firefighter 1 and 2 certification, you can be hired by the Saginaw Fire Department. And we do have one individual who completed that program that's in our hiring pool right now, and I think there are two students from Saginaw High Schools right now in the program, two that would be a great addition to our fire department one day. So I really think that's a great program where the city and the school district and Delta College work together, and it helps us because it's difficult to hire firefighters as well. And then a number of you probably also saw that Delta College has a program that they're offering with Google to give people career certificates. They recognize the need to provide flexible access to high-demand computer training, so Delta College partnered with Google to offer Career 1 Certificates in Data Analytics, IT Support, and Project Management, and it started this fall. And I think that's no charge, it's computer-based, and it can lead into some of their other programs. So I see a lot of organizations in the city that are stepping up to help provide job opportunities or training for job opportunities for youth in our city. So I did want to highlight that. Really, I am really proud of our fire department with helping to set up that Fire Academy. It's a need that they saw, and they realized they wanted to attract more people from the city to be firefighters for our Saginaw Fire Department. So I think that was a great job by our firefighters and command staff. With that, that concludes the management update.
Any questions on the city manager?
I want to make a comment on that. I talked to a youth in my neighborhood about being a firefighter, and he said he had signed up for the program, and I spoke to him about it, and he had come to find out he didn't get in it, but the day after I talked to him, he did get into the program. But the thing is, too, about if we get people in our community to get to be firefighters and policemen, they normally stay in the community. But we have known, and I'm sure the fire chiefs and the police can tell you that we have a lot of people that come from outside our community, come in and get our training, firefighters and policemen, then once they get some seniority, then they go somewhere else. This way, if we got kids in our community, they're probably gonna stay. So I thank God for the Bridge the Gap program, helping out with the police. I don't know how many people they didn't got in academy, but I'm sure in the last five years, it's gotta be at least 10 people, I would imagine. And with the firefighters, it's gonna be another improvement for our city to keep our citizens here in the City of Saginaw. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Just a quick comment being you brought up. The program that was running over in the Cathedral District, and we were just talking about that, how successful that was in the beginning, and I actually was one of the renters when I first moved into the city, so, yeah.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk.
I'm on the agenda.
The city agenda has been available in City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve, all leaving room for exception. It's been moved to second. Do I have any, do I have any that we want to pull out? Ball for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Madam Clerk.
We are now at Board Commission and Committee Reports.
Do we have any boards of city commission reports from any of the council persons?
Just one real quick comment, Mayor. Planning Commission is meeting tomorrow here in the council chambers at 6:00 p.m.
We had a school board county laser meeting the other day. Me and Annie attended that meeting, and we got some good stuff to come out of there. They want to turn Saginaw High School into a junior high school and a community center for everybody. And hopefully, the city will, do our part, we committed to putting some money in that bucket the county have and the school have, so hopefully, we continue to follow that path. That'd be a great opportunity for that neighborhood to have a community center and a school there. So it was a good meeting. Anything else, Annie, that I missed?
No.
Okay.
Saginaw Housing Commission has a meeting this Wednesday at 4:00 p.m.
Do they hear?
Oh, Saginaw Housing Commission has a meeting this Wednesday at 4:00 p.m.
Anybody else?
We are now at ordinance, ordinance consideration and adoption.
I need a motion to adopt.
Would you like me to read it, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
An ordinance to create the Flint and Paramarquette Potter Street Station, Single Entity Local Historic District in the City of Saginaw, to be added to the Table of Special Ordinances of the City of Saginaw Code of Ordinances O-204.
Now, I need a motion to adopt. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
We are now at resolutions. We have two on the agenda. The first is authorizing the extension of the master plan until October 14th, 2022.
Need a motion to adopt. Any discussion?
Is this, is this gonna be a norm, or is there a way for us to make sure that in future years, this does not happen again?
Part of the reason why this is happening is that we're at a, we started this on time, and then there were circumstances that made us go back and look at some other stuff, and that's on the planning commission. And so every time we get ready, we have to stop and come up with another, some more. So in other words, I need everybody to understand the master plan is a work in progress. It's not edge-nest stuff. In order for us to move forward, and you might be helping me and city manager helping, you almost have to have a master plan in place so that we know which direction we're going. Right now, we are running, and we're running on a old master plan that designated that area the green zone, and this new one is allowing a lot of different things to happen in it. We just updated it. That's all. Yes.
I'd like to know if this, if this, is this just an extension for the master plan, and does this alleviate at all where the persons have come together and said they don't want to see light industrial in the former, I just want to get an understanding, understanding is best.
No.
Okay.
Understand, again, the master plan is an ongoing process. You gotta put something in, in order to continue to work. The plan is to get it in and continue to work with the community, because we can change it as much as we want. You gotta have a skeleton in to move forward. And, excuse me one minute. Did I answer your question?
You did. I just had a second. Do we see a financial difference? Are we being charged more for the extension?
No, this, no.
If I could, I think there's some misunderstanding. This is an extension of our current master plan. The master plan that's been in place for years, because the draft update is still currently under review. So this is not adopting a new master plan, this is extending what's already in place.
Thanks. Did that answer your question?
I'm good. I'm good. Thank you so very much.
Did that answer your question, son?
Oh, yeah. My mom was money in. Make sure it don't happen again. So I'm good. Thank you. Thank you.
So I need y'all to stay on this for the next 10 years. So when it's time to renew it, y'all to make sure it get renewed on time. Key word, I want y'all to stay on this. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, would we still be able to make changes, even if they're not minor, according to this language, on the third paragraph?
Pardon me?
So there's an extension that was made by the commission, right? And that's why the deadline's the 14th?
Yeah. This doesn't have...
Anything to do with the new master plan, you know, the content of that. So we're required to have a master plan, the state requires us to have that. The extension that council made was through a certain date. Now that the planning commission had their delay in approval of the new master plan, we need to extend the extension that council approved before, because we have to have something in place. So that, that reference to only minor changes, that was from our extension we did years ago, saying, you know, we're extending this because we feel there aren't significant changes necessary. But now, we're just, have that same language in this extension, but that will be another, about another month, I guess, right?
We should be, we approve it tomorrow, and tomorrow, then we'll come to the next meeting.
Right. Hopefully.
Hopefully.
If not, then we just extend it again.
Well, I mean, the other thing about the extension is that you're, we became a redevelopment-ready certified city based on the fact that we had a master plan. So the extension that we're giving is for the MEDC to look at and say, oh, you're still working on the master plan. So we're required to have that extension.
And if we don't, and I'm just gonna be, keep it 100... And if we don't, and I'm just going to be, keep it 100, if we don't do it, the people that's in the Northeast District won't be eligible to get any services on their house. Let's just keep it 100 because you will still be under the old contract where you can't get any services. Not there, I know. But that is what we're looking at. Any other question? Motion on the floor? Did I get a motion? No, did I get a motion on you?
We're in discussion. Call for the vote.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did. So we can call for the motion.
Do you have a motion and a second, Mayor? You need to vote.
That's what I asked y'all. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Y'all know where you get late in the evening. Madam Clerk?
Our second resolution is authorizing application for certification under the Michigan Certified Local Government Program and to execute the certification agreement with the State of Michigan, Michigan Strategic Fund State Historic Preservation Office.
So moved.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favors?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Real quick. So I'm excited to see this on the agenda tonight. This has been a long, long process. I want to thank a lot of people in the city, our attorney. I want to thank city staff, Bob Galen, who led part of this project. I want to thank the Historic District Commission. We actually hit a roadblock with this program once we're certified to keep our certification, just like Mr. Yolanda was talking about with our RRC certification. This will be Certified Local Government, also known as CLG certification. Friend of mine approached me about this about a year ago. I looked into it, and then I started the process. I want to thank our mayor because part of this process and the application process was support from our mayor. So it's exciting to see that we are now getting to, almost to, to the finish. What this program will do is like our RRC certification, cities that are certified can get money under the MEDC programs. This is another program that's going to have opportunity for Saginaw to get money through the MEDC, through the State Historic Preservation Office. And the, the nice part about this program is, and it just doesn't have to be the city that's working on the project with SHIPPO, actually, too, SHIPPO will actually allocate their staff members to work with our city staff and the programs that are coming through. So it can be the cities working on it, and it could be a nonprofit that works on it. The programs can be run through the land bank. So this opens up a large door for Saginaw. So I'm pretty darn excited that it's here tonight. So thank you. Thank you for letting me make that long-winded comment.
I know that was truly a long talk.
But I want people to understand the program, what we're trying to do here.
It's been moved to second. Anybody else calling for the vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
We're now discussing business.
I need, I need a motion to go into closed session, and I need a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Williams.
All right. Wake him up.
Councilmember Bench.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Balls.
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache.
Yes.
Councilmember Flores.
Yes.
Councilmember Copeland.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Yes.
And Mayor Moore.
Yes. Right. Need to call for a vote to come out of closed session. All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk? I'm sorry. Counselwoman Scherzer.
I move to approve the legal counsel recommendation as discussed in closed session regarding the Taylor case.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk? I need a motion. Yes.
I would like to make a motion to set our next single subject meeting topic for ARPA discussion as public health.
Second.
I need a second. It's been seconded.
Any discussion?
I thought maybe we should go to the top of the list and work on the, the list that we got. That, that's my thoughts. I would like to go to the top of the list.
What do you mean, top of the list? Because that's all there.
The list that we got from the, from the committee, if we keep on doing this, we're going to be chopping in the middle, not having anything for the top parts that we had. That's, that's my point. That's what I'm, I'm, I'm saying.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. Everybody got an opinion.
There you go. Call for the vote.
All those in favors signify by saying aye.
He didn't get a second.
Oh, was he making?
I thought he was just saying, call for it. Okay, I need a mo, it's been moved to call for the vote. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Now, going back to the regular motion. Can you read it again, please?
Councilmember Bench made a motion, seconded by Councilmember Williams, for the next single subject meeting regarding ARPA expenditures to be set as the subject of public health.
You heard the motion. It's been seconded. All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Balls?
No.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
No.
Councilmember Copeland?
No.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
You had five yes and four no. Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mayor.
All those opposed?
I'm sorry.
Councilman Copeland had his hand up first, so.
I was pointing at you because I saw your hand.
Okay, yeah. I, I wanted to go back to something that, from our last meeting in regards to the Saginaw Fairgrounds, whereas, I'm saying it because I know a lot of people have talked about it, they want it, a lot of citizens, et cetera. But I am perplexed to the thought that we had a meeting today in regards to housing and blight, but the citizens didn't have a chance to voice their opinion. I'm, I'm asking if we would rescind that and bring it back for our citizens to be able to comment and have comments in regards to that. Is that something I can do? Guess I'm ask attorney city manager because I, I don't think, and I've had several calls, and I don't think it's fair to use ARPA dollars and make that motion or resolution without having our citizens be involved in the conversation in regards to that.
Most of the conversations that we had tonight, citizens were involved. This all came off of the list that we did back in January. When we put, when we compiled our list, we heard people say, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, we heard people say that they wanted, they couldn't, they didn't have insurance on their houses, they needed furnished, and we were steady running out of money. So choices that we made tonight, or the things that we decided to do tonight, a lot of them tinge on those meetings that, the meetings that we had and when we did the strategic plan. Because remember, that's where the list came from.
Right, right. What I'm saying is, when we allocated monies on our last meeting in regards to the fairground, people were not allowed it like they were today to come in and have an opinion, even though, like I said, I know a lot of people, majority of the people that I've talked to want to see that take place. But we, I think we yet need to be fair in regards to the people that wanted to have something to say, whether it's negative or positive. That's just what I wanted to bring in miscellaneous, if we, either we can do it or we can't do it.
No, no, no. And, and if you go back and you really look at it, I mean, we, we are waiting on the housing commission anyways. So I don't know. Do we rescind it? Or do we, I mean, because this too was another piece that the citizens said they wanted.
Yes.
Tonight, we had a young lady that spoke about the same thing. And she also said she was getting conflicted messages. Okay? I, I think that we got a lot of people who, who talking, but they really don't know what they talking about. And so, and so I, I think that in order for this really to get cleared up, because I'm hoping that the city manager goes back in, or that department goes back and send her a, a letter like we normally do, explaining what, what happened and what was getting ready to happen. I don't know. That's protocol. That's what we been doing.
What I'm saying, and I guess I'll say it again, it probably won't change, allowing, because I, I don't want it to see, come back later, would they allow people to come in and they had a special agenda for this, but didn't allow us to have the conversation when it came to the fairground? And if they're not getting ready to do it today or tomorrow, I don't think it should hurt just to kind of be in order and sync in what we're doing. Because the day we did the single meeting, I just think that we should maybe do that. That's just my opinion. We can't do it, fine. If we can, maybe I'll come to this side of the table.
To answer your question, I believe a motion to reconsider is, is possible at this meeting. It's allowed at the same meeting or in the case of council meetings at the meeting immediately following it. So you could put the motion back on the table for council consideration.
So, in other words, you can make a motion to rescind it and?
To reconsider. Well, I make a motion to reconsider, I don't know the correct words, in regards to the fairground, to, or give our citizens time to have the conversation.
Need a second?
Second.
It's been second. Any discussion?
And I, I understand where you're coming from, but is it going to change anything? Because if we don't do the special meeting and they're able to come to a council meeting to share their comments as well, would that still count? Because, and I, you, we want the community to be heard, but we still have a scheduled council meeting. I don't think that reconsidering it is going to change the way we vote. But I see where you just want to have a special meeting just for that. And I would say, would, could we just encourage them to come to a scheduled council meeting to share those same concerns or, because I hope we don't have special meetings for all of, all of these, just because of work for me. So that, that conflicts my, my work schedule, and if I have to tell my job, I have to take off for all of these scheduled meetings and I, so that's the only thing where if I could encourage them to come in the, our scheduled council meetings to say, hey, we still want to hear from you come at this time? Because if we reconsider it, we still going to vote the same way. I, I don't know if anyone would change, but.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but allow, allow the citizens that opportunity. I'm going to vote the same because I've heard from the citizens, you know, but not allowing them to be able to come. It don't have to be a special meeting, it could be a regular meeting. You know, just let us be fair across the board in what we are doing. I don't want it to come back on me.
Gotcha.
Question?
Yes.
You don't want to rescind the motion and not put the money into the, into the plan?
No, I'm just saying.
I mean, so they can discuss it anytime. Let's keep the money where it's at.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, let's bring the motion back after we've heard a lot of the citizens have input. My vote is not changing. And I'm imagining other people.
What I'm saying is, the vote, the motion was to give them a certain amount of money to clean it up. So if you bring it back up to let them talk about it, what if somebody come in and they start telling them something they don't want the money to go there?
Okay, but then you have to vote for the people, the majority of the people that has already spoke. I'm not saying change it. I'm not saying take the money away. I'm saying allow the people to, to come and say, hey, you know, out of 500 people, it might be two people that don't want it. What we going to do? Go with the 500. But at least we allow them their voice.
Can I say something for the sake of time?
Yeah.
He just brought up a great point that you agreed to, and we are good on that. Why, why are we extending this conversation?
Right. Because, because all the council people got the right to voice their opinion, Reggie.
Well, I understand voicing your opinion, but I'm saying it was resolved with that.
It wasn't resolved with me.
All right, brother.
Okay, what George said, Monique, I'm sorry.
Come on, come on. I'm not, okay.
Would that be acceptable to you?
That would, that.
We open it up and, and let people come in at the next meeting, and they can do public comment.
In regards to the.
And talk.
Yes.
I mean, but that, that's a given anyways. Okay? And so all we need to do.
Protect yourself.
So you got them people, tell, ask your constituents if they will please come in and speak for us so that we can hear. Okay? And if they're really, really concerned, they'll come. And if they not, you try.
I think it's more concerned that they didn't, wasn't allowed it. That's all, so.
Okay, so.
So is there a motion on the floor?
Okay, so, so we got a motion on the floor to adjourn?
No.
Oh. We have a motion on the floor to reconsider. It's been moved to second. All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. Roll call.
Mayor Proton Balls?
No.
Councilmember Scherzer?
No.